We're gonna call this meeting to order at five oh three. For modifications to the agenda, we're taking five C out of presentation discussion items. Any other modifications or additions?
We do have one, and that's to add the. Should we, should we restart that?
Yes.
For the record, can you restate that? I don't think that got recorded.
Okay, we are calling this meeting to order at five oh three. For modifications to the agenda, we are taking out five C to on presentations and discussion items. And Kevin has another modification to the.
Yeah, I do have one that we want to add under action item to add the purchase and sale agreement with the lower handle mill.
Okay.
To action item. And then just, just a point of clarification for staff's perspective. So regarding the waterfront development concession proposals, do you want us to bring that to fall planning? For discussion, or do you want the resolution to be reviewed so we don't keep bringing you things that you don't necessarily want to? See, you want to discuss the resolution in fall planning?
My thought was we would discuss the resolution at fall planning. Yes, yes.
Perfect. Okay, so that's what we'll do.
Quick, just point of order, just letting the Port of Hood River know that your video is not on. And that we are only seeing some other people. Thank you. And then. Request fully respectfully request to remove the consent agenda item number B to authorize executive director to execute grant construction and construction related contracts that can. Just airport projects respectfully request that pulled out of the consent agenda because I do have some questions. For legal as to what we are authorizing for authority there. So if that can be pulled out and made an agenda item, please.
You're suggesting just move that to discussion item or action item so that we could, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think we can just understand that better. Thank you.
Yeah. And then also, do we want to allow Mark Knutson to do a brief summary? That he was gonna do so that he can go instead of having his thing at the very end of the meeting?
Okay. Sorry, you're talking.
He was gonna make a few comments about. Is it, can we move, can we move that up?
Sure.
Do you want to move that to above the consent agenda or?
Yeah, above, above the consent agenda. I mean, I don't want to hold him hostage here all evening.
And I, and I have just one more thing for you too. Sorry. So then my other, my other point of clarification for tonight is that we are going to have the state of the bridge.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that the commission, what do you want to do as far as public comment? So and the reason I say is because we're about to have our standing public comment. Do you want to have comments about the bridge now, or do you want them to be able to interject during the presentation or? If you could give some guidance on that.
Oh, my preference would be if people have public comment on the state of the bridge. To wait until after the stage of the bridge presentation, as there should be a lot of really good information that may change your. Questions or your discussion items, if you have time to wait for that. And maybe not interject during the presentation because there's a lot of information.
Great, thank you for that. So I think, I think with that, you've got the public comment portion now.
So public comment, just to remind you, it's five minutes per person per subject and we have a thirty minute limit total. We had Kathy, Kathy Lance, okay.
Hi, thank you to all. I've never been to a port meeting before, but thank you for everything you do. And that's safe. Oh, sorry. Could you just put your state, your name for the record and your address is written here. So it's.
Okay, yeah, Kathy Lannes. So I'll be quick. I just have a request. I'm a big user of the hook and I've been in touch with there all along and thank you so much for helping those beautiful picnic tables down there. So I go there almost every night. I'd be the river security down there. I'm just making a request to keep the parking open until ten o'clock during May, June, July, and August. Because the sunsets down there are some of the best in the gorge. And I have a whole group of very old women like to play games down there. There's people that come off the water. We just wanted chilox. Have our dinner and not be told at nine o'clock, oh, sorry, you have to leave now. Just another hour would just be really special. It's not meant to interfere. I know you don't want people there overnight. And I really don't believe it'll make the place less unsafe. The river security people are pretty on it during the evening. So that's my request. I hope you will consider it and thank you for everything you do.
You never got away to take the soccer. Okay, thank you. Scott Baker.
Hello, good evening. Scott Baker, three oh four Main Street, Moser, Oregon. Thanks for taking a few minutes to hear me out tonight. For those of you who don't know me. For fifteen years, I worked for Hood River Valley Parks and Recreation. Now I'm bounced over and I work in the Dallas by self care about Hood River, live in Moser. And I've been a Gorge Reg since two thousand and one. And in that time, we've still, we've needed field space. The entire time that I've lived here and that need has only grown. I recently read in the newspaper that you are striving to do a conversion. For the Marina Green from Land and Water Conservation. I also had a pleasure to serve as eight years as the chair for the Oregon Outdoor Recreation Committee that does land and water conservation easements throughout the state. I'm very aware of the conversion process. And some of the suggestions in that article, and I understand it's just a news article. I wasn't here for the meetings. I think are gonna fail to meet the criteria of like for like razor recreation. And that is administered by the state, but the decisions are also ultimately made by the National Park Service. And so there are some significant hurdles that you will encounter in trying to do a conversion. And beyond just getting a yellow book appraisal for the Marina Green, which is going to be a challenge in and of itself. One of the things that will really help, I think, is if you go above and beyond. Marina Green is about three acres. If you're just looking to replace with another three acres, I think that's going to be difficult. I encourage you to look and try and expand on the recreational. And as I was considering that, I flashed back to a project that I worked on in the early two thousands, which was Fields at the Hook. I handed out a handout that shows it. So I don't have it for the folks at home, but essentially, why is the hook the hook? For those who are not port commissioners, the port just ran out of money. That was always intended to be filled in and be land. That the port could use as a port seat fit, ideally, you know, wage, wage, family wage jobs, but. It just didn't, simply didn't get finished. And so when I approached the Army Corps of Engineers about Fields at the Hook. They're very largely supportive because that had already been permitted to be filled in back when the port was created and they were just creating land out of. The river. In fact, that's how, and I know my full time, that's how we got started is because we know we needed field space in Hood River Valley. And people are like, but you can't make land. I'm like, well, the court did. Actually, you can. And so that's what wore this idea. Anyway, just throwing it out for your consideration, the idea was is that you would extend the road pass on the other side and the parking. The hook is shown those fields take up about twelve acres. You have an up to an additional twelve acres for parking. I think another opportunity is I've seen the port develop over the years is the lack of an egress. God forbid we have a fire. And so as part of this project, you could also wrap in bringing, in addition to bringing the parking onto the other side of where the island is now. But continuing along the railroad tracks to make an emergency egress for worst case scenario. So anyway, I'm happy to make myself available if you wanted to write your staff to pursue this further, other than that, unless there's questions.
Oh, for public comment. Please, I'm just here. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. First, we're gonna talk, we're gonna have the, oh, sorry.
Oh.
Back to Mark.
Evening Commissioners, thank you very much for moving me up in your agenda. I will do my best to be brief. Again, I'm Mark Knutson with the Special Districts Association of Oregon. I'm a senior consultant. And was retained by the port to be able to facilitate the completion of a performance evaluation for your executive director. If you recall, at the August Commission meeting, you basically directed your executive director to move forward with an agreement with SDAO to complete that evaluation. Using the criteria that had been proposed by Kevin in terms of the basis for this evaluation. Based on that, the agreement that they put into place very quickly. And each of you was very prompt if getting back to me with your completed performance evaluations for Kevin's performance. Over the period of time from September of twenty twenty four through August of twenty twenty five. I received that information, compiled it into a summary spreadsheet, evaluated all of the numbers in terms of providing a, an average performance rating. As well as providing a summary of all of the comments, input and goals that you had identified in your individual evaluations. I shared that evaluation form with you this evening in terms of the summary. We have spent some time reviewing that information. And based on that review, it's my understanding that by consensus, you believe that that summary is a fair and accurate representation of your. Individual evaluations as well as the collective evaluation of the commission. Based on that, we met with Kevin and you presented your findings and your evaluation. And so essentially that evaluation is now complete for that evaluation period. In terms of next steps, I think it's key to have a plan moving forward and you've identified that. And so. Assuming you approve the summary this evening, the first sense is that you would like the, the. Commission's Personnel Committee to consider the input from the evaluation. As the basis to review and adjust Kevin's compensation. So that would be step one. Step two is you would like Kevin to review the goals that you've identified, coupled with the goals for the organization that Kevin had identified. Merge those and bring them forward as part of your fall planning session. So that you can discuss and prioritize those goals, since you each had several goals that you would like to be considered. And so. The goal for the goals would be to narrow the list to a manageable. And then the, the, the last piece that I think is so very important is that you also expressed support for using this process going forward. And so you would like to use the criteria that have been established, the process that we've helped implement. As the basis for Kevin's performance evaluation for the next evaluation period, which would be September twenty twenty five through August twenty twenty six presumably. And so you set the goalposts for how you're going to conduct that evaluation and I applaud you for that. With that, if there are questions for me, I'm happy to field them and it would be appropriate for you to consider approving the summary evaluation form that we provided earlier.
I think you did a great job summarizing all of that.
This is not the first time.
Do we need to make a motion to approve? Do we want to do that now?
Sure, why not? A move that we approved of this Port of Hood River Executive Director Performance Evaluation Summary as facilitated by Mark Knutson from SDAO.
Can I get a second? All favor. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Captain. Thank you. Very good.
Very good. Thank you again.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks. And don't hesitate to reach out if you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're moving to the consent agenda. I would like to give a motion for consent agenda eliminating item B, which will be moved down to action item.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed? Agenda, all right, down to information reports. She only will answer if we have any questions, but I don't think any, oh, okay.
We did receive some questions from Commissioner Thomas and those have been answered.
Okay.
I think, is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. I really appreciate staff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, down to presentations. HMTB Mason Bruce with our success bridge replacement impacts presentation.
Yes, so we've got Stuart Myers on the Zoom call. And Stuart Myers and I have spent considerable time over the last few years getting to know each other, talking about LWCF, which is Land Water Conservation Fund. And so this is really about the land that these buildings are currently on. It's about three acres that the bridge replacement effort will need. And we're gonna need to mitigate this, this land. And so Stuart is here to kind of walk the commission through that, answer any questions you might have. So Stuart, if you want to just introduce yourself briefly and then you can take it away.
Well, thanks, Kevin. Could I just get a thumbs up from folks that you can hear me okay? All right, great. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be part of your, your meeting here tonight. My name, as Kevin mentioned, is Stuart Myers. I am a senior ecologist with Mason Bruce and Gerard. And I'm part of the consultant led owner's representation team for the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Replacement Bridge Authority. Helping to drive environmental compliance for that project. And one of the key environmental compliance aspects of the project is, as Kevin mentioned. Compliance with LWCF, the six F rules associated with the conversion. Next slide, please, Patty. So I wanted to just start off, it sounds like based on some of the public comments there, there's some folks in the room that probably have a pretty good grip on LWCF six F rules. It's, it's, it's somewhat of a. Rule that isn't triggered very often, so it kind of flies under the radar for a lot of projects, development projects, et cetera, infrastructure projects. But. Just to give a little history to kind of set the stage on where we are today. So back in the nineteen seventies. The Marina Park area was developed using, partially using LWCF funds. Those are federal funds and with those funds come certain rules. And as many of you are probably aware, the new replacement bridge is going to be built on an alignment that is just a little bit downstream or west of the current bridge alignment. And is going to basically land more or less where the meeting's taking place there at the port office. So that's within the. Permanent bridge footprint and is also an encumbered six F area. So with that, the new bridge conversion. Well, it's a, it's an encumbered area. So LWCF rules state that the new bridge will require a conversion, which will require offsetting of recreation land to be acquired and developed elsewhere in the area. And so the, the two primary agencies that we're engaging with on this process at the state level, it's the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. And at the federal level, it's the National Park Service. And then the National Park Service more or less has the final say on key LWCF compliance questions. Next slide, please. So just wanted to provide the group a little bit of an update on where we are now, what we've done to, up to date now. We've been working on this, as Kevin said, for a couple of years now. And the first step was really to confirm what the actual LWCF boundary is around Marina Park. When we started this effort, we were looking at some pretty. Old grainy documents, the documentation we got from OPRD had. It was a, looked like a photocopy of a photocopy of a hand drawn map that showed a, I would say a relatively imprecise line around the park. So we. Went to look at various old documents, tax lot records, grant records, and we're able to stitch together. What the current boundary and the, the actual now, the, the current boundary is for the LWCF encumbered area around Marina Park. And this screenshot there, hopefully you can all see. On the left is from a map that I've just kind of focused in on kind of the focal parts of the, what we're going to be talking about here tonight. The dashed green line there is the LWCF boundary around Marina Park as it runs kind of near. The bridge, the port offices and part of the boat basin. And part of that effort, we determined that the properties at six hundred and seven hundred East Marina Drive. Should have never been encumbered and they actually aren't encumbered now. There was some old documentation from some of these grant records that clearly said that that area would be set aside for other, other uses, other non recreational uses. And so in coordination with OPRD and MPS, they agreed to take. That property that you can see there and kind of the, the yellowish polygon there out of the LWCF encumbered area associated with the park. So that part is not part of this encumbered area. We also have been more recently coordinating with OPRD and National Park Service on the actual conversion footprint. The polygon there that's showing, kind of showing up in yellow, right adjacent to the existing bridge, that's more or less really the. The impact area in Marina Park for the, the new bridge construction. So that includes the. Permanent bridge right away where the bridge will be for years to come and also temporary lay down and construction areas to support construction of the bridge. And as part of that, the Bridge Authority, we worked to see if it was possible to exclude some of the temporarily impacted areas outside of the permanent conversion footprint with the rationale that those areas we're talking about. Part of the boat ramp parking lot that'll be encumbered, basically some of the lawn there that's right outside the office, the waterfront trail will be detoured during construction. But it will all basically, everything that's outside of the permanent bridge footprint will be put back to more or less what's there now. So the rationale that we approached OPRD and MPS with is that, hey, after six years of construction, this is going back to, to be, you know, park amenities that are more or less what's there now. Can we just have the conversion focus on the permanent bridge footprint? They considered that, but basically their rules say that any, any non recreation conversion that's over a hundred and eighty days in length is considered a permanent conversion. And there would be a process where we could move staging areas around and kind of chase. Temporary nonconforming use, non conversions, but that didn't really make sense for building this important bridge. And so. So that, that area, again, I just wanted to point out is the temporary impacted area and the permanent impacted area for the bridge construction. We are also have recently, within the last few months, started appraisals of the conversion footprint. I'll talk a little bit more why that's important in this process in the next few slides. And another key part of my presentation tonight is to really get into some of the high level details of some of the replacement properties that we're looking at to satisfy the conversion requirements. Next slide, please. So wanted to get through some of just the regulatory requirements of LWCF six, LWCF six F replacement land requirements, just kind of at a high level to. Ground everybody on some of the requirements associated with what the replacement property must have and how it must tie back to the conversion impact. So I mentioned the appraisals that are undergoing right now. That's an important part of the project because the replacement property must have the same. Or higher fair market value than the converted land. So that's why we're doing the appraisal of that conversion footprint. To get that fair market value so that when we are really, really ready and earnest to start looking at viable replacement properties, we can do that match of fair market value and make sure that that requirement is satisfied. In terms of uses, the requirements are a little bit, a little bit lenient on this. It's, it's kind of grave language here and that's actual language right out of the federal register. Associated with OPRD and MPS's rules, but the replacement property must have reasonably equivalent usefulness as the converted land. So. In other words, it doesn't have to be a one for one match of what's there now. Parking lot, maintained lawn, part of a trail. It has to be reasonably equivalent in its usefulness. So that gives a little bit of flexibility of the types of recreational amenities and property that could be used to offset the conversion. Which is good because it gives the project some, some flexibility and really seek out what's the most meaningful. You know, replacement land that could really serve the community. I wanted to point out that wetlands meet the reasonably equivalent usefulness requirement because of their recreation and open space values. And that, that's a positive aspect to this. Property hunt that we're, we're undergoing now because in a lot of cases, obviously wetlands and creeks have, as they should, you know, development restrictions on them and it makes. Other types of uses, I guess you could say, less attractive from a permitting and mitigation standpoint. So. I just wanted to point out that wetlands do meet that equivalent usefulness requirement. And from a geographic standpoint, the replacement property need not be directly close by the converted land or even on it or adjacent to it. But it shall, it shall serve the same general community. So there is a little bit of flexibility in the geographic extent to which the conversion replacement property is situated. From the converted land there at the bridge. Next slide, please. So one more slide with the replacement land requirements. This is one that I just wanted to point out here briefly, and that is land that is currently owned by another public agency, may not be used. For conversion replacement property unless all of the following applies. I won't read through the sub bullets here, but I just wanted to drive home. The, this rule in that from a process and programming standpoint, land that is currently in private ownership is more attractive to move through the conversion replacement process. For, for these reasons. It doesn't mean that if there's land out there that is currently publicly owned, it couldn't be programmed in to be the conversion replacement. It's just a little bit more regulatory scrutiny on that process that's, that's pointed out here with these three sub bullets. Next slide, please. So now I've got several slides here that are high level overviews of just candidate replacement properties. I want to emphasize, these are just high level candidate replacement properties. Nothing here is certainly binding by any means. This is just a result of myself and Kevin, as he mentioned, he and I have been coordinating on this for some time now. And, and us collectively engaging with others in the community that are developed, that are involved in parks and open space. And just sort of land management type activities, folks that really have their finger on the pulse of where. and just sort of land management type um activities, folks that really have their finger on the pulse of where a potential new park might really be a good location for the community. So the first one here is what we're calling the Mills Parkdale property. It's um upriver a bit, up Hood River a bit and Parkdale, it's right at the intersection of baseline. And it's at the uh former rail depot, it's about four acres in sign in size. It currently is privately owned. But Hood River Parks and Recreation District has an option to buy the site and is currently seeking state funding from OPRD to purchase uh the land. They have a grant submitted to OPRD to uh formalize the purchase of that property. It is within the district's master plan and at a high level appears to meet uh six F six F replacement land rules. And if the district uh does purchase the land, then uh you know, it's our recommendation to the Bridge Authority and the Port to request preservation of eligibility from OPRD and MPS before acquisition occurs to preserve preserve its six F mitigation eligibility. Uh that goes back to that uh private land versus public land rules that are associated with program programming, the conversion replacement. And we have that effort uh underway here now um over the last few days. Next slide, please. The next candidate site is what's been called the Old Walmart site. It's uh in West Hood River. It's a site of a former proposed uh Super Walmart that never was never developed or materialized. It's a pretty good sized uh piece of property. It's about six fifteen and a half acres and it's made up of seven different parcels. My understanding is that it's currently in private ownership. And the land itself is mostly level, but it does have some creeks and wetlands associated uh on it. And as I mentioned a few slides ago, uh wetlands and creeks are considered um you know, reasonably equivalent usefulness of the loss of recreation with the bridge impact. So those wetlands would be considered to be an enhancement to that potentially becoming a recreational area. And in talking with uh folks at the at the Parks District, they've had some conceptual ideas for this site potentially becoming a nature park. But also with some more developed amenities such as ball fields. It's frankly, at the end of the day, it's a it's a big enough site where you could potentially, this is all theoretical conceptually here, but you could have kind of a more natural area, kind of a nature park feel, but also those more developed amenities such as ball fields. Next slide, please. Uh the Bowman property is located uh a bit east of town. It's along the interstate. It's just east of Mitchell Point Tunnel. It's a bit pretty good sized property. It's fifty two acres with ten acres being considered for down the road at potential park. This property is owned by the Columbia Gorge Environmental Foundation. And in checking in with the foundation, they have had conversations with ODOT regarding putting the next um undeveloped phase of the historic highway trail through this property. It just geographically ends up being in a in a a gap for that that um that uh trail that ODOT manages. So they have had discussions with ODOT about potentially having the trail be on some portion of this property. Uh it does have a developed uh conceptual plan for developing park amenities. The screenshot here is just an excerpt from that plan, kind of honing in on the ten acres that would be considered a a park there along the river. And uh this area, since it's outside of, you know, the municipal jurisdiction, say Hood River or other towns in the Columbia Gorge scenic area, it is it is in the national scenic area. And it would also require a rail crossing and a new interstate access to fully develop. So those are just things to consider. Um as we continue to look for potential replacement properties. Next slide, please. Uh the next property here is called the Yasui property. This is private land located right at Viento State Park, again along uh west of town, along uh the interstate. And and the map here shows uh what I was trying to show with this um map screenshot is the Yasui actual property owned by the Yasui family is the lighter blue uh L shaped polygon, if you will, that mostly occurs within the river. The dark blue is actually the Columbia. The white is uh upland areas. And so most of it's actually submerged land, but you can if you can see that sort of triangular part that overlaps with um the upland area there, that is sandwiched between um certain sections of Viento State Park. So it's very certainly could it's uh support expansion of the existing park. My understanding is that this is a very uh popular down downstream windsurfing pullout location. So I know it gets a lot of use from various different types of recreators, namely the windsurfers. And this one does have an at grade railroad crossing and generally has pretty good access based on the the park already being there. This is another property that's within the Columbia Gorge National Scenic Area. Next slide, please. And a site that we've been looking at uh on the north end of the new bridge crossing, it's uh locally known as Bridge Bridge Park or Waterfront Park. This is a conceptual park, again, like I said, located in the north end of the bridge. So this is in on the Washington side of the crossing in Clickattack County. Um given the topography over there, it does and some of the just the the land ownership over there does have some complex access and development issues. There's uh tribal land uh right adjacent to it. There's, of course, the railroad um that's downslope from SR fourteen and and there's steep slopes that that go basically from the road access point down to the shoreline. And um you know, there there's definitely rationale that this would serve the overall general same community that's impacted by the conversion um at Hood River, especially when you consider that the new bridge is going to have multimodal um bike and pet access across the river, which would essentially tie the north end into all the trails and park amenities on the south side. LWCF rules require conversion replacement land to occur in the same state as the conversion, even though you know, you can make the argument that this this park would serve generally the same community that's impacted just on the other side of the river. And so we've had conversations with uh OPRD and MPS and they've stated that um they really need the the conversion to occur in Oregon. So um I've kept this one on the list, but this one is a um probably a more challenging uh site to get through the process, even though um from just at face value, it certainly could um expand recreation opportunities for for the local community. Next slide, please. So with this slide, I just wanted to point out that there are other um pri- private properties that are uh are have been in sale in the past that are on the district's purview as potential park acquisitions. I'm not obviously not going to go through a lot of details on these because they're just conceptual and there hasn't been any landowner outreach, but just wanted to drive home the point that there, this is not an exhaustive list that I've shared with you. There are other potential recreation opportunities to to satisfy the conversion requirements for the bridge project. And certainly, you know, further district and landowner coordination would be needed to determine viability, but I wanted to just uh leave everyone with that thought that this is just not an exhaustive list and we will be pursuing these other sites potentially as we move the conversion process forward. Uh next slide, please. So I wanted to wrap up with just this last slide here to uh just go over next steps in the process. So we are uh in the process of the fair market appraisal of the converted land there in Marina Park, as I mentioned. I anticipate that that appraisal will be done within the next month or so. So once we get that fair market value, can really start in earnest to do the the land value match that I talked about earlier in my presentation to get to determine that first sort of element of the conversion process being satisfied. Uh we will certainly continue conversion replacement property due diligence, continuing to reach out with local folks involved in parks and open spaces and really have their finger on the pulse of potential uh land that's developable for a park. Uh we're looking at requesting a preservation of eligibility of candidate replacement properties with OPRD and MPS. And I wanted to spend a little time discussing why that's important. Um I mentioned it in in the context of the Mills property in in the Parkdale area. It's a great initial step in vetting the replacement property with OPRD and MPS. It it certainly is not a final approval from the regulatory uh agencies that go ahead and go forth and do your conversion here. But it's it's a way to kind of start early dialogue with both um agencies to potentially program sites in as conversion replacement. It does preserve eligibility if replacement land needs to be acquired before a final conversion is approved by MPS. I mentioned that private versus public nuance with the rules, so it it helps to preserve eligibility if, say, a private land is sold to a public entity. And it just overall provides due diligence and schedule flexibility. Um as the gentleman mentioned during his public comments, the conversion process is pretty complicated. There are quite a few rules and regulations associated with it. So we certainly want to um make sure we have uh flexibility on options for replacing the converted land with with new park lands and the preservation of eligibility is a is a good step in that direction. So again, once we uh get the fair market appraisal value of the converted land, then we'll can we'll complete high level value appraisals of candid candidate replacement properties. The final appraisal has to be a yellow book uh federal appraisal, which can be pretty uh in intensive and pretty involved, but OPRD and MPS are encouraging and allowing the project to do kind of high level, not full yellow book appraisals, but to get really a good solid uh number without fully going through yellow book so that we can go out and again, start doing those high level evaluations of replacement land. And once we get what we think is a is a lock and something that's that's compatible, then we would do the yellow book appraisals on both properties. And of course, we need to keep OPRD and MPS uh you know, in lock, we need to keep them in lockstep with all of our uh efforts on this linear process. So as candidate properties become more viable options for the conversion replacement, we will certainly vet them with uh the state and federal folks at OPRD and MPS. And that's all I had for uh the meeting tonight. It's kind of a quick, fast uh overview of kind of where we are, but certainly um if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to address them now.
Hi, thank you.
Got a question.
Oh. Go ahead.
So I'm I'm particularly excited or I guess interested in the potential of of the Bowman property that that you outlined. Seeing as how that property is so essential to complete the bicycle trail that stretches from Portland to the Dows and um completion of that trail would really make that corridor into a world class destination for people touring on their bicycles and not to mention that the Moser Twin Tunnels Trail is a real uh gem in our community. Being able to have that going west as well would be phenomenal. I guess my question about it is um I think you said that oh is it ODOT that is is really the the key player in completing that trail?
That's correct. Yeah, they're they're the owner operator of the trail and um.
So hypothetically, if 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 that were to be uh the property that um that was used for this process. And uh we wanted to work with ODOT to you know, complete that trail. Would would ODOT then be the the party that would be putting up money to complete the trail and do the freeway access, get the railroad uh crossing and all that?
Yeah, I mean, that those are great questions and they would have to be, you know, sorted out with the appropriate parties. Um if the Bowman property was deemed as the conversion replacement property that needs to move forward. Um it in, yes, I mean, the answer to your questions is yes. I mean, it would have to be a partnership between all involved with developing the land, whether it's ODOT. Um the port, the Bridge Authority, the the Environmental Foundation, others that may get involved. The the roles and responsibilities for funding and moving the any kind of uh conversion development, replacement development forward certainly needs to be sorted out between the Bridge Authority and the port before it happens. Um because I guess one thing I should have maybe said at the onset is the Port of Hood River is the LWCF sponsor. So technically, on paper, the port is responsible for ensuring that the conversion is is mitigated or replaced. However, but obviously the Bridge Authority, they're they're the entity that's managing and going to operate the new bridge and their project is impacting the encumbered LWCF area. So that just presents a scenario where both parties need to sort it out and and work together to satisfy those conversion requirements. And with that's going to be, you know, understandings and agreements on um what funds what, um who's responsible for funding acquisition of the land, developing the land. You know, there's land acquisition and there's obviously developing the land. And then you mentioned, you know, Bowman, there's access issues and whatnot. So that that's certainly some things that need to be sorted out down the road, but what I like to use as an analogy, I I've get involved in a lot of transportation work and, you know, ODOT um Department of Transportation has, you know, quite a big footprint on the state and oftentimes they'll they'll widen a roadway or have some sort of right of way take where they clip an LWCF encumbered park. And so even though the park's the sponsor, you you know, ODOT understands that their project is triggering the need for um LWCF compliance and triggering the need for the conversion. So ODOT works with parks in that in that example to partner and team up and and make sure the conversion replacement is done. So I I know I didn't answer all your specific detailed questions that would have to come out in the wash after um a site was deemed um satisfactory and and checked all the boxes with the regulators and port being the sponsor and the Bridge Authority being the trigger for the conversion, but but you know, theoretically, that could be worked out. There's there's nothing holding you back. Yeah. Catherine.
So.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Catherine.
So Stuart, I I just have a just a a question. So just taking this out of this presentation, my understanding is the port buildings are currently on six F land, which is recreational use only. The bridge is entering Oregon, which will and also having construction laid down for more than eighteen months. So the Bridge Authority, the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority, has to compensate and pay for that ra- land relocation. And so what actual role does the Port Commission have in choosing the options of the comparable land, if any?
I think since the Port Commission is basically the 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 LWCF sponsor, I think they have a lot of um authority on that. Uh I think it's really um at the end of the day, it's really going to probably come down to the 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 commission making a recommendation. Certainly, the Bridge Authority would have to be involved and be okay with that, especially if they're funding um acquisition of land or development through their project funds, but the commission is going to have a pretty important role in this process as we get down to vetting specific lands in detail and working on um I mean, like you're getting at, you have the you have the land acquisition for the bridge itself, right? And the the authority needs to buy the right of way from the port. Um but that also triggers this other land um acquisition need that's going to happen somewhere else. So I I see the commission as is pretty intimately involved in this process as we get down into more details on um making the conversion process um move forward. So I think I don't, I I hope I asked your answered your question. Um feel free to counter with another question, but but yeah, the commission is certainly going to be very involved in this, I think.
I'm just as a I've had questions from constituents that are asking, so the Bridge Authority has to use taxpayer money to pay the port for land that the bridge is going to enter on. And then the the Port Authority then is responsible for potentially a new park or new land acquis- like the park upkeep, et cetera. So the.
Yeah, okay.
So you're going to be saddled with the irrigation costs hypothetically.
Okay, so I see. You're talking more about like just O and M for the future park down the road. Um that that's a great question. I'm glad you brought it up. So there is a process. So technically, the way the the rules say in the LWCF manual is that the project sponsor, which in this case is the Port of Hood River, is also just by default the project sponsor for the new replacement land. But there is a process for um changing the project sponsor. And I've talked to Kevin about this and I've talked to the Bridge Authority about this too. I mean, at the end of the day, uh the Bridge Authority is laser focused on just the bridge. They're they're a small lean group that's really their mission is the bridge, owning, you know, building the new bridge, operating it, et cetera. The port, while they have park lands too, you know, the the ports um got quite a bit going on. And you know, my understanding in just talking with Kevin and others is that if if there was another entity that would be willing to take on the long term sponsorship or, you know, seeing the LWCF rules out in the O and M of the new park, then then the the from my understanding, the port and the Bridge Authority would be fine with that and would actually prefer it because they would be better suited for the long term management of the site and just it's part of what they do and it's they would certainly like to potentially increase their um assets and portfolio of what they have for the community. So there is a process by which a third party could come in and take over the sponsorship of that park. Um and and so that the the port and the Bridge Authority aren't getting into management of a long term asset that say, you know, five miles away uh from the bridge or the port property, et cetera. There is there is a process for doing that. And I think, again, parks and rec departments, others would be ways way better suited to do that.
Um, thank you. I think Mr. Greenwood.
Asked a question I was going to.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Uh that was really good information.
Thank you.
Moving on with that. Okay. Um, so moving on to the state of the bridge.
Yes, yes, the next the next one. Um so uh we've got some very esteemed guests here. We've got uh Michael Mitchell from HDR as our structural engineer of record. He's going to, if you want to come up to the podium. Uh he's going to kind of run through uh today's uh program. Just a couple of other introductions. Uh we've got Paul Bandlow on Zoom. Uh Paul, you're back in uh Philadelphia.
Me? Are you?
Actually, I'm in Indianapolis tonight, but yes, originally, normally in Philadelphia area.
Gotcha. And and Paul is our mechanical and electrical uh engineering uh principal at WISJANI. But we also have uh Charles Young, who is the Hood River County Emergency Manager. And then uh Ryan Clapbridge, our own uh facilities manager is going to cover a couple of slides uh in the presentation. And really, the genesis of this uh presentation is based upon all the things And really the genesis of this presentation is based upon all the things that have happened since last summer's bridge strike. We've had a large bump, we had the Rowena fire. And so, and we really haven't done an update in since I've been executive director. So it's been three plus years. Don't know if we need to do this every year, but it's been a while. And so with that, I'll hand that off to Michael to run through the slide deck.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Again, I'm Michael Mitchell, a senior bridge engineer with H D R. We have a contract with the port to provide structural engineering support in the port's operations and maintenance of the bridge. So next slide, please. There we go. Thank you.
Really long presentation.
The first thing we'll start with is just kind of an overview of the bridge inspection report. That really keeps all of the bridge inspection and load rating data and compiles it in a single, single spot. The bridge undergoes inspections every two years and those are according to National Bridge Inspection Standards. In this case, the, the Port of the Rivers Bridge is a little bit unique. It gets some extra inspections because of the type of structure it is, not just the routine inspection, but also a fracture critical inspection. Fatigue prone detail inspection and then an underwater inspection because of the force bridge underwater. So the timing of those things is done in general. It's all coordinated through ODOT. ODOT has consultants that do the routine inspection, fracture critical inspection, fatigue prone tail inspection altogether. ODOT typically performs its own underwater inspections. And so they do that oftentimes at a little bit different time of year, which will come into play as we talk about a few specific examples of items and, and things like that. So I think, go ahead, next slide, please.
There you go.
There you go. One's back again. There you go. Great. So one of the, we'll touch on a few different aspects of the bridge inspection report. Some of those being the sufficiency rating, start there. Condition rating is another aspect of the inspection report where a condition rating is given to all of various elements of the bridge. Uh, we'll talk about the load rating of the bridge and what that means a little bit. And we'll also talk about some. Maintenance recommendations that are provided as part of the bridge inspection report when we get them. So one of the first things that is at the top of the bridge inspection report and it's highlighted there on the right is, is a sufficiency rating. And that can cause, or that can create a lot of interest in this case. In this case, the sufficiency rating is primarily really used to make funding decisions. It's not necessarily a indication of the bridge's safety. It's an indication of where the bridge is at in its service life. What the bridge needs in terms of perhaps replacement or rehabilitation. So an example of various federal guidelines for funding that come out for different grants and things like that. Sometimes if the sufficiency rating of a bridge is greater than 80, it's not eligible for federal funds. It doesn't, it doesn't need those. If it's between 50 and 80, they would lean towards rehabilitation funds. Less than 50, it may be eligible for replacement in that case. So it's not unusual to have bridges with low sufficiency ratings. In this case, the Port of the Rivers Bridge sufficiency rating is seven. That is out of a hundred. And so we'll talk a little bit about the reasons why that is. So the sufficiency rating incorporates four factors. Their structural adequacy and safety, as you can see up there, serviceability and functional obsolescence. Essentiality for public use, and then there's some special reductions that might be applied. So each one of those is informed by multiple aspects of the bridge inspection as well. So for instance, the structural adequacy and safety category there is informed by the condition of the bridge. So I'll talk about the superstructure condition and the substructure condition as we go through here. And just so we can get our terminology clear, the superstructure is generally the beams or trusses that run horizontally on a bridge. In this case, it's our green trusses primarily. And then the substructure are the piers that support the bridge. So in this case, primarily our, our concrete piers that come up out of the water and support those green trusses would be considered substructure. So again, structural adequacy and safety is informed by condition and the load rating of the bridge. Serviceability and functional obsolescence is informed primarily by a lot, really the geometry of the bridge. So the fact that the bridge has narrow lanes, the fact that the bridge has reduced vertical clearance perhaps. And some other aspects of the geometry placed to is functionality and, and serviceability. Essentiality for public use. Another, in that case, the detour lane plays into that, that factor. As well as the amount of average daily traffic that the bridge sees. So there's a, there's a large number of factors that go into sufficiency rating. And older bridges have lower sufficiency ratings, primarily because a lot of those. Deck geometry types of things that we're talking about, lanes, vertical clearances, et cetera, are, are low. They don't meet current design standards, right? Another aspect of things would be. So structural adequacy and safety, load rating and the condition rating play into that. And we'll talk a little bit more about both of those condition ratings and load rating as we move forward. So with that, next slide. So condition ratings, wanted to give just an example, this is directly from the manual that's used to. To evaluate and to give these ratings for various elements. So zero to 10 type of rating. Note that primarily we're talking about things in the kind of that middle category, four, five and six, poor, fair and satisfactory. You'll, you'll know that, you know, concrete cracks almost as soon as it, it exists. So you're going to see even in a fair condition, some cracking at times, right? So as you read through a bridge inspection report and cracking is noted, that doesn't mean that it automatically jumps to a critical condition, right? That can be a, a fair condition. So we'll see that as, as we move through things. But as we talk through things, primarily we'll be talking, the, the bridge's condition is. Has some elements that are currently shown as poor, some that are shown as fair and some that are shown as satisfactory. And so we'll talk through each one of those. Next slide. So this is just a breakdown, that, that condition obviously changes with time due to various things that we do. So this shows the deck condition rating. In this case, the deck is really just the steel grid primarily that, that you drive across. Then the superstructure, again, the green trusses and substructure, concrete vertical elements. But you can see that the deck condition rating and the superstructure condition rating have actually improved in recent years. As the port has done maintenance on the bridge and, and various elements. So while they were a five or coded as a five by the bridge inspection teams in 2020 and 2022 and 2024. They were coded as satisfactory. And as we'll talk about later, the port has done some trust maintenance projects in recent years that likely contribute to that. We'll see the, the substructure condition rating has gone from fair to poor in 2020. It went down to a poor in 2022. And future slides, we'll talk a little bit about what's likely playing into that a little bit. And then we'll notice that the sufficiency rating that we were talking about previously has also changed with time. In 2020, there's, there's, I think, two main factors to that sufficiency rating, dropping from 38.7 to six. And one of those is an update that was done to the load rating based on new guidance from federal guidelines and from, from, from ODOT and things like that. So that updated load rating played into that. And then also just above it, the substructure condition rating going from a five to a four also factored into that sufficiency rating drop. So with that, next slide. So why did that substructure condition rating drop? That we, when we get the bridge inspection report every year, we get a great memo that goes along with it as well. That explains some of the rationale behind some of the coding. In this case, you clearly see that they were down, the, the substructure was downgraded to a four in 2022. Based on the 2020 inspection report. So again, I was talking about previously, sometimes these inspections don't occur at the same time. And so the 2020 inspection report, report or underwater inspection occurred after the 2020 inspection report came out. So it doesn't get factored in until the 2022 inspection report. So know that, and then the, the port actually went ahead and addressed some of the underwater inspection items. Based in 2023, right? So we have on the right side of 2024 report, that again, it's noted, it's still based on the 2022 underwater inspection. So the port has addressed a number of these items, they just haven't made their way into the overall routine bridge inspection report. And we can see that on the next, uh, next slide, a good chance. This is the 2022 underwater inspection report, they're noting pier six and eight need to be repaired. The port took that into consideration and it's done so. And the 2024 underwater inspection report notes that those items have been repaired. So it's, there's a little bit of timing going on there. But a, a lot of these maintenance recommendations are being addressed. With that, next slide. We'll talk about the load rating. So that was another one that factors into that sufficiency rating to some degree. And there's questions about the load rating. So the load rating is an analysis, it's a structural analysis that's done on the bridge. And it's informed by the bridge inspection to some degree in that we consider the condition of the, the elements in, in their capacity. So if a element had, the trust was really deteriorating and had a lot of section loss, then the capacity of that trust would be lower and would be factored into the load rating. That's not necessarily the case here. And then it's, we look at, what the load rating is intended to do is to determine the safe load carrying capacity of the bridge. So we complete that based on state and federal guidance. And really what it is, is we consider various loading patterns. Many of them, but obviously not every possible configuration of your car and my car and that truck and, and, and whatever that's going to be on the bridge at a certain time. There's guidance that provides typical loading patterns that then encompass all of the various conditions that the bridge is expect, is expected to see. And that can be from speed. So there's been discussion about the, during one of the conditions, the Rowena fire, the bridge was backed up, right? So traffic wasn't flowing very fast at that time. But that happens regularly in Portland and other places where traffic backs up on a bridge. That's all part of and considered in, in the, in the load ratings that we do. And then resulting load restrictions are posted for the bridge. So. The Hood River Bridge is load posted. There are signs that restrict certain trucks from, from traveling across the bridge. And so again, from a safety standpoint or structural adequate stand, structural adequacy standpoint. I'd say this really plays into what is it structurally adequate for? And it may not be for all trucks right now, but, but that is, that's what's being managed. And, and so the sufficiency rating goes down and everyone recognizes the bridge needs to be replaced, which is where the port's at. The port's working on bridge replacement, right? So I think the last slide that I'm going to touch on before I turn it over to Paul is maintenance recommendations. So at the end of a bridge inspection report, there is a set of maintenance recommendations that are provided by the bridge inspection team that's out there. You'll see one of, these are just some examples from, of what are in, in the current bridge inspection report. Routine welding of steel grid deck on a 12-month cycle. And I'm sure you all experienced that, you see and recognize when a lane's closed because the port is, is welding on, on the deck. And, and that's just part of maintenance of, of a steel grid deck. The, another one, it's a unique one here that, that showed up here in 2024 and it's grinding down the edges of an original manufacturing defect on span seven, span four. So these are manufacturing defects that really haven't shown up in bridge inspection report until now. The paint has finally peeled off and I see that it's not a concern to the bridge, but it's something that we want to address and, and make sure that the paint doesn't continue to kind of deteriorate from there. Again, clean and paint, steel trust members with significant corrosion. So they're pointing to areas where there may be significant corrosion. The board has just recently actually had. Folks from H D R on the bridge doing a detailed inspection of the paint condition. And, and really the findings that we've heard so far, then it's, it's in pretty good shape. There are some places that need a little bit of touch up and things like that, we'll work through and prioritize those as we manage the remaining necessary service life of the bridge. But we're working with Kevin and Ryan on that. And then the last one, so as I pointed out, the, the maintenance recommendations in 2024. Still show repairing these large falls and voids on piers number six and eight. And those, that's the underwater aspect that we did in 2023, just hasn't, while it's still in there, hasn't gotten taken off yet because of the timing of things. And we'll continue to work with ODOT and, and others on doing that. So next slide, I think I turn it over to Paul.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I'm Paul Bandlow. I'm a senior principal at W J E. And we've been involved with the lift span of the bridge, particularly the mechanical, electrical aspects of the lift span for more than 10 years. And during that period, we've had various assignments to make sure that the bridge remains in, in good condition and reliable operating condition. Some of that includes mechanical investigations, mechanical inspections, electrical inspections. We've also done span balance testing. One of the more important things we've done with regard to the safety of the bridge is a Trunion ultrasonic and magnetic particle inspection. So what you see pictured here, those are what we call the Trunions. They're, they're large pins that support the entire weight of the bridge. And the counterweight, when, when the bridge is in operation, so they're obviously critical to the, to the safety of the bridge. And that inspection includes ultrasound, which is a, a way to look inside of the Trunion, if you will, to look for internal defects. We've also done magnetic particle testing and that scans the surface of the Trunion to, to look for cracks. And those, that testing was done in 2016 and again in 2021. And each of those times, we found no evidence of, of cracks in the Trunion. So, you know, they, they are in good condition and the surface of the Trunion is also in good condition. The last inspection we did was in 2024, that was a mechanical, electrical inspection. And that's due, the next mechanical and electrical inspection will be due next year in 2026, as well as the Trunion. We would ultrasonically test the Trunions again in 2026, again, to make sure that they're, that they're, they're suitable for continued operation and the safety of the bridge. Next slide, please. So what do we do in turn in a mechanical, electrical inspection? Primarily, they are, well, they're mostly visual nature, but we do some other things as well. On the mechanical side, it's a visual inspection of the span drive machinery, the counterweight ropes, the span logs, live load supports. Those are the, the bearing points for the bridge and as well as the span and counterweight guides. We do operational testing of the bridge, the bridge is operated several times and we observe the various systems operating as part of the inspection. And we take measurements of bearing and gears to document where. On the electrical side, it's visual inspection with operational testing. We also record electrical parameters, including voltage and current to see if the, the condition of the motors and to see the loads on the motors. We do something called mega testing, which is an old, an insulation resistance type testing. And what that does is it determines the insulation resistance. We do something called mega testing, which is an old, an insulation resistance type testing. And what that does is it determines the insulation resistance levels on. On the wires. And by looking at that information, we can determine the remaining service life of. Made feeder, maiden, main feeder cables and motors on the bridge. And. The last thing we do is what's called an operational sequence interlock test. The bridge has. Specific safety features which prevent the machinery from being operated out of order. For instance. In order to raise the bridge, the traffic gates need to be down and we verify that all of those interlocks are in place. As, as part of the electrical inspection. Next slide, please. In terms of findings, generally the bridge is in, in good condition mechanically and electrically. There are some things that are dated, but. There are no, no critical findings. On the mechanical side, the bridge is not seat consistently. So sometimes when it comes down, there's a slight gap at the live load supports. Which means the bridge will move slightly under, under the live load of traffic, but. It's not a huge concern, but it is something that should be corrected. We've got some machinery enclosures that are in poor condition at the top of the tower that need to be corrected. We, we found water in the gearboxes at the top of the bridge for the spread drive machinery. And in that case, it's simply a matter of changing the oil in the gearboxes. And there's some shift cover winches that are in, in poor condition and need replacement. These are the winches that allow. For the covers to be removed for, or raised so that we can inspect portions of the ships. And the shivs of the large wheels, if you will, at the top of the towers. On the electrical side, the seating control sequence needs to be modified and we believe that will help with the, with the seating of the bridge. There are some wire nuts that are in violation of ASHTO. And typically wire nuts are, are something that may be commonly used in residential construction, but they're not acceptable to ASHTO. So it's not a huge concern here. But they should be replaced and the wire is properly terminated. And then we have some unlabeled wires in junction boxes. And this will only be a problem in the event if there's a, an issue with the bridge and you need to do troubleshooting with. Wires that aren't properly documented can make troubleshooting more difficult. So. Overall, there are really no significant findings and, you know, we'll continue to work with the port to improve the condition of the bridge. Next slide, please. In terms of bridge operations, we have recommended that the bridge be operated monthly. These are primarily maintenance operations. As you may know, there aren't very many. Operations for, for marine traffic these days. And we've suggested those operations be conducted during off hours to limit disruptions to the traveling public. The purpose of these operations is to distribute lubrication, but also to keep staff familiar with the operating procedures of the bridge. In terms of making sure that the staff is up to speed with operating procedures, we recently conducted. Training and that was done just a couple of weeks ago and that was done by our electrical personnel. In order to keep the bridge operating reliably and make sure each operation is, is reliable as it can be. We've arranged for our electrical staff and the staff from Panatral, who are the. Systems control people to be on the phone as backup to the port during all bridge operations. And in support of that, the cell phone coverage on the bridge was recently upgraded so that we have. Better, better access to the bridge. And if there is a problem in, in a. In a bridge operation, we can see what's going on and we can direct the port to make, take the necessary steps to get the bridge back down safely. And with that, I'll turn it back to Michael.
So this slide really shows just some of recent and upcoming projects that the port is, is working on with respect to maintenance, several spending. So ongoing, we mentioned the steel grid deck welding that occurs on a regular basis. In two thousand and twenty three, miscellaneous trust repairs and those underwater pure pairs. So those are. Items that came directly out of the bridge inspection report like we were talking about previously. Obviously in two thousand and twenty four, we'll talk about this in a second, but there was the emergency repair to the bridge portals due to the, the impact. And really what we're. Moving forward towards right now is in two thousand and twenty six, doing bridge steel and coating, coatings, maintenance repairs project. So again, trying to knock off. Just a few more of those minor maintenance recommendations that are included in the bridge inspection report from a trust side of things. And then really begin to program and make sure that we have the, the coatings under control. Considering the anticipated remaining service life of the bridge and how that plays into the new bridge replacement. So. Making sure that we can extend those coatings long enough and have some contingency there. The bottom provides some numbers provided by Kevin with regard to maintenance and capital spending on the bridge over. Last three years or so. Next slide. This is also our capital improvements, C I P, and then inspection and maintenance, I N M D. Plan that we keep for the bridge. And this is informed by the bridge inspection report. So. This is really hard to see and not intended for you to, to be able to see all the detail of it. But really what, what you would see, if you dig into it, is that some of the items to the left of that red line are projects that have been completed. For instance, the two thousand and twenty three underwater repairs. And then there's some projects that are kind of programmed out. The bigger. I guess orange line and rust colored line, I'll call it. Are steel repairs and the maintenance painting that we just talked about planning to do in two thousand and twenty six. So. We use them, we plan these things out. Right now we're looking at a twelve year plan, considering the fact that the bridge is anticipated or be replaced. Somewhere around that time. Next slide. So Kevin also asked that we just touch on some recent events that, that you guys have all lived. Including the overhead portal bracing impact in July, two thousand and twenty four. So that was a case where I got a call from Ryan one afternoon. I was actually busy doing something, so I had to transfer that to somebody else, but. HDR was out on the, on the bridge later that afternoon. Assess the damage, determine that the bridge needed to be closed for a short time while it was assessed. Got it back open to partial traffic, got a, an emergency repair done relatively quickly. And then we're able to open it back up to, to live full traffic. So. It's a situation where the port is reacting to situations very quickly. And, and, and doing a really good job of, of, of keeping this bridge as, as. As active as it can be for traffic. Next, there was a bar drug that occurred in two thousand and twenty five, April, two thousand and twenty five. So just a little bit earlier this year. This was a situation, as I understand it, again, somebody saw a barge close to the concrete piers, alerted port staff. Ryan and I think Kevin were both out on a, on a boat there soon after to take a look at, at the. The concrete pier. What you'll notice kind of as you look at those photos is a few things. There's more than one rub on there. This is a. This occurs on somewhat regularly, regular basis apparently. And it's really. What's good to know is that the bridge is, is, is handling it as it's anticipated to do, right? So in addition to confirming that. You know, there really wasn't any major damage to the concrete here. And Ryan went up and checked and, and took a look to make sure if things hadn't shifted up in the movable spans or the, or the superstructure and things were in place as expected. So. An event happens, the port reacts, they, they assess the damage, pull in HDR as needed. And, and we kind of move along. And then lastly, in terms of recent events, the Regina fire traffic, fire traffic detour. So due to those traffic detours, traffic was backed up on the bridge for an extended period of time. And, and that raised some concerns and, and that's reasonable. And as we noted, those types of events are considered. In bridge design, in load rating, et cetera. They're not unusual, especially in, in other. Maybe entities, well, maybe a little bit unusual for, for the traffic to be backed up on, on the port of the river bridge. It's not necessarily for, for other bridges. Then the last thing that Kevin wanted to touch on a little bit was the bridge foundation. So this has been a topic of, I think, recent discussion in some degree. And so what we have shown here is some excerpts from the nineteen twenty three original bridge construction plans. And you'll see. A dash line here that shows their understanding of the time of where bedrock was or a hard rock layer was. Who knows what goes into the investigations of that time to, to make that line? But really they knew that was there, but that's not what they were trying to accomplish. They weren't trying to drive piles to that layer necessarily. You'll see the highlighted section up there basically just gives the size of a hammer, a pile driving hammer that they're supposed to use and. Drive it with that size hammer until it stops driving. And at that point, we have a capacity that we need wherever the end of that pile is. And, and so that's was the, that's how bridges essentially were designed and built back in nineteen twenty three. If you go to the next slide, nineteen thirty seven, not too, not too dissimilar. The bridge got raised to about nineteen thirty seven to accommodate the, the dam. And they added some steel piles around some of the piers at that time and really very similar again. They say drive firmly into rock, but they really had no idea what they're driving firmly into. They're using a hammer and, and, and driving it down till it, till it stops. And, and that's, that's really what's needed for the bridge in typical. Everyday strength and services, the terminology we use, but in its everyday life. So we'll go to the next slide and talk about current conditions and current findings. So the lower portion is a. Complete view of the bridge, you can see bridge and then the, the soils profile below it. The upper kind of picture is just an excerpt of that blown up a little bit and slid over the main span there. The gray area is bedrock. And so you'll see that not all of these foundations are founded in bedrock. While they might have thought that they were in something like rock in nineteen twenty three, which is shown by the red line. They weren't actually, they were below that in some cases. And then the green line. You can kind of see it shows where. Where rock was understood to be in two thousand and eleven. So it's, it's even changed since two thousand and eleven as more and more geotechnical explorations have occurred. They've identified more clearly where rock is along the whole length of the bridge. So. In summary, this is what we know now, based on the explorations to date. And you'll see that the, the foundations aren't. Set on rock. And so is that concerning? The answer is really no, it's not concerning for everyday use of the bridge. It, it is concerning in the fact that if there is a seismic event. Liqufaction of those soils may not provide the same resistance. As, as they would in everyday life. So if in a seismic event, those soils could lose strength and the bridge would settle to some degree. Which would not be ideal. The bridge does have some tolerance to some amount of settlement, not a lot. And that's, this is just a function of liquefaction really and seismic. Concerns not being understood until, you know, the nineteen sixties are, are not really. Being considered in bridge design till after some conditions, some of the seismic events that happened down in California and things like that around the nineteen sixties. So now in current bridge design, we would try to, or we would. Design our foundations to go to a layer that would not be impacted by a seismic event. In this case. These, where the bridges are founded, they could be impacted by a seismic event. And so the port is moving forward with. Bridge replacement. This being, you know, one of the reasons really is seismic resiliency of the bridge. So. Everyday use, we're in good shape. And then. Get a new bridge for, before that, that side that happens. I'll turn it over to Charles at this point.
Thank you very much. My name's Charles Young. I'm the head of the county emergency manager. And I help out for the port because you don't have an emergency manager. And so that function kind of devolves up to the county. One of the issues that we just mentioned was the Regina fire. And previous to that, we've had many other times where. Traffic has been affected on eighty four for a long periods of time, including most winters. And one of the things that came out of the A R for the Regina fire though, was that we weren't great at writing down our procedures and our processes for dealing with large traffic. And so we called all the jurisdictions together and started to meet to have. A book of plans of how we're actually going to deal with, with traffic. Now, we are topologically constrained. There's not a lot of places for vehicles to go. One of the main routes out of this area is of course the, the existing bridge. And as we know, that very quickly becomes gridlocked. But what we're hoping to do is to build a set of mitigations whereby we try to reduce the impacts of particular populations within the gorge. One of those is emergency, emergency traffic such that we can move emergency responders to and from an incident. We can also move medical patients to and from hospitals and to and from definitive care, which for us is, is almost always Portland. Bearing in mind that quite often the impact. That is closing eighty four is weather based and therefore he, you know, planes and how we can't fly through the gorge. So it's a complex and, and evolving landscape to be doing traffic management. And the way that we're approaching this is to rather than have fixed plans, we are trying to build playbooks. Of smaller plans within plans and we're trying to give out what, what are the dependencies. Bridge one of these plans and also what are the ongoing impacts? As an example, during the Regina fire, Kevin actually placed personnel on the ends of the bridge to, to reduce the risk. Of a bridge strike whilst people were using an unfamiliar route to, to reduce the risk of. An oversized vehicle crossing the bridge and then causing more chaos. Because of course, at the time that, that eighty four was closed at Regina, SR fourteen was also closed. And so it was, again, if we keep on having this confluence of unlikely events happening simultaneously. And so this, this traffic management plan is, is, is to assist with. Trying to reduce some of those impacts of the, of these traffic events. This is going to be an ongoing project. One of the things that I'll talk about actually in the next slide is that. Plans have to be exercised. Plans have to be updated. And so. We're going to end up with a, a plan book that has, I think I counted eleven jurisdictions named within it. This is going to be a complex set of plans to exercise and I'm looking forward to everybody's involvement to actually exercise that plan. That could have the next slide. We've been working on several plans. As you know, we had the natural hazard mitigation plan. I'm sorry. I, I didn't put up the full name of the plan. It's the plan with the longest name in the world. It's actually the. Hood River County Multi Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and Community Wildfire Protection Plan. I usually can't do that in one break.
Have an acronym.
And what that the plan does is allows the port now to take advantage of mitigation funding through FEMA and other organizations. To do specific mitigation plans that are identified in, within this. To do specific mitigation projects that are, that are identified in those plans. And there's something in the order of two hundred projects identified for various jurisdictions, including the port and the county and in the C W P P. We are starting in the county an update of our emergency response plan. Sometimes called emergency operations plan. And as part of that, I've been reviewing the port plan and that is consistent with the county's plan at the moment, which is wonderful. But we do need to make sure that we're exercising those operations plans because without exercises, we don't learn, we don't improve. And so there's a cycle of writing a plan, exercising the plan, improving the plan, and then rewriting the plan. And as part of the county conference emergency plan update, we'll be seeking port input on that. I do also want to mention, and I, I didn't put it on the slide here, that we also offer training through emergency management and one of the trainings coming up in. Early December, and this is where you told me that December is not a great time for you. Is we're providing a. Port class that's taught out of the National Disaster and Emergency Management University in Emmitsburg, Maryland. They'll come out here or a, a local representative will come out here and teach the national incident management system for elected officials. The audience is for elected officials. So this is training for how you. So this is training for how you interact with an incident, um, to be able to provide policy guidance to the incident. So, um, I'm actually just going to quickly ask, is there any particular time in December that's not going to work for this group?
My bet.
I'll make sure I'm not put on the twenty fifth or the thirty first. Um, I'm hoping to have it in the first two weeks of December, sometime in the first two.
Yeah, earlier than my.
Perfect. All right. So unless anybody.
Will there be a virtual option, sir, for the class or was that in person only?
Unfortunately, it is in person only because it's very much scenario based.
Um, great. Thank you.
Yeah. There are, there are occasionally online versions of this class and I will look out for one of those for anybody that can't attend. Um, so unless anybody's got any questions in line, I'll wait for the end of the, uh, presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ryan Clapbridge, Phillies manager. Uh, just a couple more slides. It's going to be quick. Uh, we do have all of the full-time staff is flagger certified, which is through ODOT. So we can actually flag in Oregon, Washington and Idaho. It's not just a port themed certification. Uh, we have the executive assistant and one other admin that is for our public communications. So they're very great at getting everything out soon, clear, and we don't get a bunch of phone calls. Uh, the executive director serves as an incident commander and provides updates to the community and leaders. Our policies, as Charles had mentioned, well, he's working on all of our emergency management stuff and our port, port policies as well with our H R team. Our emergency action plan, as Ian talked about, was, uh, there wasn't a whole lot to it until he come around and he helped us put everything together with the, the city, the county and everybody else to be on the same team, which is great. Uh, we now have a, well, being put together, we should get it soon, a bridge operations manual, which goes through the training that we just had. So if there's any emergencies out there while we're lifting it, it helps us figure out how to get it back down safely in a timely manner. And the national incident management system is what Executive Director, uh, Kevin Greenwood has taken, which helped us with our security. Next slide. During the emergencies, the, uh, ODOT helps us park trucks out in lot one to keep them off the freeways and from going across the bridge until everything is safe, usually during the winter time. During the Marina Basin or at Marina Basin Park, we also, our flaggers help direct all the tall oversized loads away from the bridge as Charles mentioned, to keep from having more damage on the bridge. We put people on both sides and we redirect, which has helped in the past. We did that for a couple of weeks there when we had the portal trust strike. Currently, we have two facilities employees that are fully certified to lift the bridge and we are in the middle of training three others, which is a huge help. Uh, typical bridge lift is about thirty minutes depending on the height of the lift and how fast or slow the boat is. So it's very quick. Recently, we've worked out a couple bugs with the bridge lift, so it's up and down flawlessly. Uh, it's been great because of the help with H D R and with Jenny. Uh, next, I believe is questions.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Maybe you want to come up and sure. Be the right person for questions. Do you have any questions for him?
I have a very good presentation. Thank you. I don't have a specific question, but I really appreciate all the detailed, um, information about the, um, the sys, what's it called? The sufficiency rating. Uh, I guess really good for, for the public to know also why the rating is so low that there's many factors involved in that, not just safety.
Could, could you clarify? I think, um, I get this question a lot. Could you clarify what would cause us to have to change the, you know, the loud loads on the bridge? Like what sort of report from this upcoming twenty twenty-six bridge inspection would trigger a change?
Yeah. So, uh, one of the things that would trigger, uh, an update to the load rating, which would then potentially, um, update the, uh, the posting is a significant change in the condition of the bridge. So if there was a finding that changed, as an example, the superstructure was last rated, I believe, as a five, uh, the condition five. Fair. If the superstructure moved to four, uh, we'd have to look and see if that would be the one that would actually do it or lower perhaps. That would be a point where we may, um, update the load rating because that would be a factor where the capacity of the members would be affected by their condition. So, okay, thank you. That's all.
I have one quick question. I know that in the past there was other factors that, um, constituents or people could, um, exercise in helping the bridge, such as their speed. Um, is there additional, um, you know, reiteration for the public on what can the public do to help with this bridge? That would be beyond controlling of the speed? And can you maybe just retouch on that, on why a slower speed for heavy trucks is important on the bridge?
Sure. So, um, touching on that specifically, a slower speed for heavier trucks, there's a dynamic effect that occurs uh, as a truck drives over something that's not perfectly smooth. Um, every time it hits a bump, it bounces up and that creates an additional load or that kind of comes back down, larger load than. So, um, yes, going slower is, it's in fact, one of the ways that, uh, load ratings can be addressed if there is a significant finding in a load rating, uh, on some bridges, we've lowered the speed to be able to, uh, accommodate that size of you. Beyond that, I guess I would just say obviously, um, if the public can't, um, follow the guidance of the, the, the posted, uh, loadings, uh, that's obviously important. Uh, there's only so much enforcement of that that can be done to a certain degree. And so there is a bit on the honor system, um, for better or worse. So, uh, yeah, the public can follow those postings. That, that would be it.
I think the one I get asked the most is, is the bridge safe for me to drive on? I think you've answered the answer yes. And so over the next twelve years, this is your twelve year plan. Over the next twelve years, what are the most critical things for this port to keep in mind, keep it that way? I thought in our control, I understand a seismic event, that would not be in our control. Right. In our control, what's most, yeah, I can do to keep it that way.
I would say just continuing to, uh, follow up on those things. So I think the one aspect that we're diving into a little bit deeper is the, the coatings, uh, steel condition, uh, and what we're, um, because that has been on the list for a little while, um, that, that, the, the coatings have been deteriorating on the bridge. Um, and so that's one of the things that we're diving into a little bit deeper to see is that really something um, that's affecting the capacity of the bridge. Uh, what we've seen so far is, is no. Uh, but we need to stay ahead of that so that the paint doesn't deteriorate so much that then it does begin to affect the capacity of the bridge, uh, by rust section loss.
Yeah. Right. Painting that entire bridge would have to cost tens of millions of dollars. Do you foresee that being necessary, uh, as long as your inspections go the way you think they're going to go?
No, I, I, I don't think so. I think we're going to continue to do inspection. And I think the, the plan that we talked about today is to, um, do maintenance and spot paving across the bridge as needed. Um, considering the fact that there is a planned replacement.
Thank Catherine.
Sorry, Chair. Uh, you answered my question, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Is it a good time to discuss the, uh, the operating, like, injector to execute grant construction? The construction related contracts for the airport?
Sure. So let's go ahead. That would be the item that was brought down.
Off of consent.
Off of consent. And we do have, uh, Ashley Dougal, who is our legal counsel, is here. Uh, I did print out some copies of the grant agreement, so those are in front of you. Uh, but, you know, we just got this a couple of days ago. And so, and as you can see, there's a pretty tight deadline, uh, to get those signed. It was the seventeenth. They did call, uh, federal highways. They will allow us until noon on the nineteenth to submit those. But, um, there are three elements at least in this agreement that Ashley really did feel compelled to just bring to your attention and, and not necessarily specific to the port, but just, uh, overall, because this is affecting a lot of local governments and the counties and state based upon, uh, guidance that's coming out of D C. So, um, so with that, uh, Ashley, do you, uh, want to give some background on, on this? On these documents, we're, we're into this project about two years, almost three hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, we're talking about a million dollars worth of federal grants, a couple hundred thousand dollars in state grants on a project to build ten T hangars and, uh, the, uh, taxi lane out at the airport. That's been a goal of the commissions for, for many, many years.
No, no sound.
Looks like she's unmuted.
Broken. No, can't hear you. Well, we, well, she's trying to figure that out, maybe as a clarification while we're waiting for her. If we have sound from Catherine, because she did pull it from consent, maybe we could, maybe she could start with her question.
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. And so actually, I would just recommend signing off, signing back in and choosing the audio. Yeah. Unless you, I guess my question is, I am here in D C and I'm talking to, um, a lot of legislators. And there are a lot of federal D O T grants and I was in, uh, the building yesterday. My concern is just our understanding of the requirements of when receiving federal funding and also the potential contradictions or misunderstandings or miscommunications between Oregon state funding and just ensuring that the terms and conditions for both, there's no contradictions in between them both. And us as a commission, understanding what we're agreeing to, because it is my understanding that we're agreeing to all current executive orders and any future ones. And so I just want to ensure that we are looking ahead with open eyes because let's say the administration changes. Again, very, you know, and there's totally new ways of looking at it. So just long term.
Yeah, I think just, uh, I think there's some issues related to, uh, immigration, uh, rules, federal immigration rules that, uh, currently, you know, if we sign the agreement as, uh, presented, uh, you know, we would be required to assist ICE, uh, with information on, uh, our employees. We, all of our employees are W two employees, certainly don't anticipate that, low probability, but need to bring that to your attention. Um, also, since Oregon is a sanctuary state, a lot of the provisions in state statute run counter to the, uh, uh, requirements in this federal, uh, contract. And so, um, so those are, are important issues, you know, low probability. But, uh, I know Ashley had some very important things to, to share. And you had a brief, uh, interaction with.
Yeah. I mean, and that's, that's the real concern. Um, if we sign for the grant, uh, we as questioners are saying that we will abide by federal rules. Okay, fine. But we are also a, as the port, a special district, we are a division of our state government. And our state government says, you shall not, shall not do these things. So there was a concern from our legal team that they wanted to, I guess, prevent us from committing fraud. I mean, they don't want us to be in a situation where we're saying, yes, we're going to do something and then we've got this, this problem over here. It's like a catch twenty-two situation. And so, um, I, I had sort of said, hey, Cat, come on, guys, just sign it. We'll, you know, we'll accept the consequences if there are any and, and, um, I don't, I don't know that they're comfortable with that. So can you hear us, Ashley? Can we hear you?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
So, so can I just, um, for my own clarification?
Yeah.
It sounds to me like we're talking about, uh, an unintended consequence by signing a grant. It seems to be similar, if you want to do apples to apples, of a grant was signed in the seventies that then beholden us to land mitigation today. And we just want to be mindful of not locking ourselves into anything that could hinder us down the road. Is that right?
Ashley, what's your, what's your interpretation?
So I'm not sure about the seventies piece of this, and I'm sorry for missing that, that, the beginning of your conversation. I was having some audio difficulties on my, on my computer, but, um, I did want to give some background context as to why I flagged these particular provisions for you all without, you know, going into too much of a legal analysis, because I would recommend having a more detailed conversation, uh, confidentially. But I'll just say more generally, um, part of the language here that was flagged is kind of in the context of a greater lawsuit that's occurring right now, King County v Turner, uh, which involves sixty cities, um, suing HUD, D O T, F H W A, 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 a bunch of different agencies, including the F A A in the Western District of Washington. And so this lawsuit is about, uh, potentially illegal grant agreement terms, uh, in federal grants, uh, which requires grant recipients to cooperate with federal officials in the enforcement of federal law, including cooperating with the non-feeding U S Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Um, and so the issue with that, at least in Oregon, is that there's this, um, state law, the Oregon Sanctuary Promises Act, which essentially makes Oregon a sanctuary state and places certain related obligations on local agencies in connection with that state law. And so agreeing to that language in a federal grant agreement would potentially mean that Oregon local governments must abide by their contractual obligations or their state legal requirements. They have to choose to either violate the contract or violate state law. And so the court recognized this and they granted a preliminary injunction in this case, uh, which will be appealed. So it's just a preliminary injunction. So this, this case is not at the end. It's, it's only beginning. Um, and that means that for so long as the injunction is, is in place, the federal government can't enforce this language against, uh, our local governments. But again, the key word there is for so long as it's in place, it's very likely appealed. Um, and it may be overturned. We, we do not know, um, the future for this case. And so, um, the obligation from that, uh, preliminary injunction is that the, uh, as federal government does not enforce this language against local agencies. However, the way that the Fed is, uh, typically approaching this in their grant agreements is by putting two key provisions into your local grant agreements. One, they're keeping the unenforceable language still present in your grant agreement. And two, they're adding additional language on top that references this injunction, stating that for so long as the injunction is in place, the unenforceable terms will not apply. But also saying as soon as the injunction is up, they will apply. So, um, that is essentially the, uh, general, a very high level summary of what this lawsuit is about. Um, the language that was the, the base of this lawsuit is similarly present in the F A A grant terms that, um, we have looked at, that were provided to Kevin. And so without getting into too much of the specific risk analysis for you all at a public meeting, I'll just say that, uh, we are still analyzing those terms and exactly what we would recommend as far as executing. I think we can get to a place of execution, but we're going to need to do a little bit more of a risk analysis and ideally provide some sort of, um, additional documentation along with the, the grant agreement from potentially legal counsel. Uh, and ideally, uh, we can update the council on that in some sort of attorney pri, uh, client privilege communication over the next day or two. So that was a lot of information. Um, I am happy to answer any sort of general questions about that if you have them. Uh, but our general recommendation would be just again, because of, you know, the timing here and wanting to move quickly on the project, our recommendation is if you're comfortable with, um, giving Kevin the authority to sign the grant conditioned upon legal's review and, uh, approval. And then we will communicate with you confidentially in the next couple of days. we will communicate with you confidentially in the next couple of days to, uh, identify any further risk, uh, in a privileged manner, and then identify a recommended path forward as far as, you know, any additional documentation needed to protect port and their, uh, employees if this was executed.
I'm offline. I'm comfortable with that. Um, I think you'd have to wait for a month for you to build and make a decision for you to confirm a meeting.
Like, uh, Ashley, I think my main question is that we have until, uh, the nineteenth at noon or this grant opportunity, the million dollars worth of grants go away. Is this, do you think, what's, what's the probability of uh, of your firm being able to do that analysis and provide some kind of uh, a letter, uh, by it?
I, we'll do our absolute best. I mean, we have, I, I know a number of the attorneys who are involved in this lawsuit as well as um, you know, individual cities who are represented in this lawsuit as well as, um, other attorneys who have a vested interest in this lawsuit. So, you know, I'm already kind of trying to crowdsource with them to see if they have any suggestions. Uh, you know, we will be in constant contact with Kevin, you Kevin. Uh, I mean, we have been today and will continue to be tomorrow to and keep you updated on our progress and, you know, I I don't want to promise anything, but we will do our absolute best to get you, uh, the money because we know how important it is.
Yes, and I I am cognizant of time. Quickly, uh, the word cooperate, I just wanted to highlight because in my in my discussions here in DC, um, I think that is very, I just wanted to bring this up and bring this off the consent agenda, just because I think it it needed some discussion, but the word cooperate could that is, I think, a key word in this whole discussion because does that mean we assign a staff member to assist any, I mean, we don't have our own police force, right? We don't, there's a lot of things that we don't have that we're not in charge of that is different than the case that you're referencing, but we you know, having the the grant opportunity is huge for our community. And I don't think we should um, stop any access to funding that's going to help us. But at the same time, I I appreciate you and your diligence going through it, but the word, if we could get a better information on the word cooperate of what that actually looks like, because if it's just, yeah, just don't impede us, don't lock arms and not let us in. I mean, I think that's an interpretation I'd just like to hear more on. Maybe not in this meeting, maybe offline in the the private communications, but thank you.
I I appreciate that comment. Um, I guess I'll say, I think all of Oregon would like some further clarity on that. Um, but as far as I've understood, it can be, uh, applied quite broadly, right? It it it's not just to police and law enforcement. It could be to individual staff members, um, as well. So that's, I guess, all I'll say here, but we can provide further assessment in in our email communication.
So I think in the stat, in the memo, because we've got a total of four grants, not all of them are federal, right? And then there's going to be three contracts, those, those estimates are included in the memo. So, uh, Ash, and I would, uh, my recommendation prior to getting this most recent discovery was to ask for the board to give me the authority to sign those documents based upon legal review. Uh, with this new information, would that still be a valid, uh, a valid motion?
Yes, I i- i- yes, I think so personally. I just think, of course, with the important caveat of, you know, legal review and legal communication to the board of any, um, you know, key risks that we identify. Right? So so I guess in that, I guess, um, I, you know, as in this situation, if in future grant reviews, we find other um, different legal risks, I want to be sure that, you know, before we sign off on it, we would be informing you all. Uh, if it was attorney client privilege communication, then confidentially, but informing you all of the the legal risks so you can request that we, um, look at it a little differently if necessary.
Right. And I mean, we really appreciate the work you're doing for us. I, which I take it is primarily to make sure that we don't violate our own state law.
Correct. And don't put your staff in a position of violating state law.
Right. So, um, with that understood, um, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize our executive director to execute grant construction, construction related contracts for the Ken Jernsted, uh, Jernsted Airfield Projects.
Subject to legal review.
What?
Subject to legal review.
Subject to legal review.
Second.
I said one thing for you though.
Yes.
The only concern I would like addressed, or at least legal to take a look at, is the one thing I don't want is any employee or member of their family have any safety concern because of this. I'd like legal to look at it. I'd like legal to take it as part of it. Okay. And I'm fine.
And we've got it set up from Catherine. Does that sting? Okay, okay. And discussion has already happened. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right. Question passes. Thank you.
All right. The last one is, uh, from the page, from page five of the executive session memo, there is a motion uh, regarding the cell of the lower handle mill. This would be the recommendation, uh, if you want me, I can just read the recommendation, the motion.
If you don't, your executive director report.
Um, we, uh, let's see. I guess we just went straight into action items, but I didn't, there's nothing more to add in my.
I just had one question that I wanted to get about the executive director report, uh, attachment regarding attachment A on page sixty-nine, which is the Port of the River Strategic Business Land update scope of work for consultant services.
Yes.
Um, and I guess the only question I had was on, uh, beginning on page seventy-three, which is the evaluation uh, criteria for contracting with a console to help, um, and and it continues on the next page and we've got all these different, uh, relevant criteria.
Yeah.
Um, do you, can we take into account, um, reviews of consultants from other clients?
Sure, oh, absolutely.
Does that fall under the relevant experience? Where does that, where would something like that fall?
Yeah, and and just, I think it would be in the scoring criteria. So you could say something like, uh,
Under, but the scoring criteria is broken into percentages.
Yes.
So where would that?
We could create a percentage. We could pull some of the percentages from some of the other criteria. So that based on references.
So you're not saying this evaluation criteria is not set still?
No, no, this is a draft.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I I just wanted to emphasize that I think, uh, getting reviews from other people that have used consultances for the exact same thing would be very useful and something that we should do, consider doing.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think it takes a lot of sense. So, uh, you know, there's probably a half dozen in state that do these for ports, so.
And that's all I wanted to raise on that. So.
Sorry, I went out of order.
No, it's okay. It's okay.
I saw that.
Yeah, I need to get through. Yeah. What's the next thing we're doing? You say it's action item, it's not on our agenda?
Oh, I have a motion.
Yeah, right. So this is the, uh, we're adding at the beginning based upon the executive session.
Oh, right.
We're coming out, we are adding an action item, uh, which is approving the PSA, the land use application, which page? Well, it's in, it would be in the executive session. That's fine. Page five.
So I have a, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the executive director to sign the county land use application and the executive purchase and sale agreement and the final legal review.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question passes.
Great, thank you.
So we're down to the commission call, upcoming meetings. I appreciated the the comment on the park closure and I wouldn't mind adding that to our fall planning to change the times. Christie made a comment that a lot of parks close, um, an hour after sunset.
Now I'm understanding the context of your text.
Yes.
Is there a reason to close at nine in the summer? Or is that just when we close and?
It's so hard because sunset is such a different time throughout the year. And I think nine was just kind of an average, but I think an hour after sunset works really well because it, um, adjusts for seasonal.
There are, are there any safety concerns in the summertime of closing out?
With our, uh, security team and having a kind of a set time that we give them, that we close the parks, that's consistent with all the parks. So if we do it from the post, we should probably do it for all. And then being able to tell people, it's hard to enforce something that's a moving target. So we really need to, you know, dusk gets very and so, um, you know, security operates on black and white. And it they, for them getting the parks closed, you know, it takes them over an hour after the park closes to get the people out. And so if we want to have people there at eleven at night, I mean, I'm not saying one way or another, but it takes them a really long time to go through and get the suite to get people to move because they'll say, oh, I'm parking the, you know, I've got to come get my car. It's going to take me a few minutes. And they're going to all the parks to do that. So that's why we had the nine o'clock.
Would you guys have time to look into the impacts, uh, financial? Organizational impacts of changing that to ten and?
For next time.
And I had just attached to that.
Sure.
Uh, so part of that was because when I had seasonal staff and no security team, it was the seasonal staff that was closing parks and bathrooms. Now we have a a security team, so it's pretty wide. So I think that would be.
My only other comment, just going back to the ED report is page ninety-six is the, I think it's that last section for, uh, fall planning. Uh, the projects for consideration. So just, you know, make sure that those are the things we're going to probably be spending most of our time focused on. So we'll add this to that list, but just, just want to make sure that that's what you guys want to focus the majority of your time on for the fall planning.
You know, you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Have to have a chance to take a look at it.
Everybody else? All right, well, we will now recess regular session and move into foundation meetings.